Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, November 2, Sioux Falls City Council Meeting. Thanks for joining us tonight. Mayor, we'll go ahead and get started by reading our role, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Here.
Sale. Starr.
Here.
Brecky.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Knightzert.
Here.
Kylie's also here.
Kylie is here. We skipped you, man.
Sorry, Rick.
Story of your life, huh? I see you over there, though. All right.
Quite all right. I'll leave.
All right. With us to give our invocation tonight is Pastor Aaron Astmas with Memorial Lutheran Church. So I'd ask that you rise for Pastor Aaron's invocation, and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Just going to share a word here. He said Memorial Lutheran Church, and some of our Lutheran churches just talked about the Reformation and some of the writing of Martin Luther. And I just wanted to give you just a little bit of what Martin Luther said about good government. And as Martin Luther talked about government, he talked about it as a gift from God and echoes a lot of words of St. Paul in Holy Scripture about being govern- about government being a gift that God uses to bring us good order, to bring us blessings in our lives. And even when we say the Lord's Prayer, we pray, "Give us this day our daily bread." Yeah, God certainly gives daily bread to everyone, even without our prayers, writes Luther, even to all evil people. But we pray in this petition that God would lead us to realize this and to receive our daily bread with thanksgiving. And he says, "What is daily bread?" Everything that has to do to support the needs of the body, such as then a lot of things he lists, and then in comes this: good government. You're all part of that. You're all part of God's provision for all of us here in this community, and we thank you very much for being good government for us and for bringing blessings that were needed in our daily lives, just the daily things we don't even think of. So we pray. Lord, God, Heavenly Father, we thank you for daily bread, not just what we eat, but we experience each day and always, including, Lord, the blessings of good government, of servants who desire to care for the needs of the people in this community. We pray, Heavenly Father, that you will continue to keep our hearts united together in our care for one another as citizens that truly would lend our hearts to the well-being of our neighbors. Thank you for wisdom and guidance for those who are given leadership, bring blessing, Lord, even to this meeting now tonight, in the transactions, the talking that takes place, even disagreements, everything that takes place in order, Lord, that we might be well-cared for. Pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Then we thank Pastor Aaron from Memorial Lutheran Church for that invocation. We'll move on to item four then, which is our consent agenda. Any changes or motions to be made there?
Move to approve.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen to approve. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. We'll be head to item fourteen, our regular agenda. Can I have a motion to approve that, please?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Kylie.
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Kylie to approve the agenda. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson. Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Just before we continue on with our agenda, just want to review how public input will work for our agenda items tonight. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to three minutes per person unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. And for our regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. During general public input at the end of the meeting, comments will be limited to no more than three minutes per person. With that being said, we'll move on to our next item, please.
Item fifteen is a new 2021 package liquor license for Mini Haha Country Club, 3101 West 22nd Street, CUP not required. Item sixteen is a new 2021/22 retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License, and new 2022 retail wine and cider license for Chuck Stop LLC, Charlie's Pizza, 6213 South Old Village Place, CUP not required, pending final inspections per fire, health, and building services. Item seventeen is a special one-day off-sale wine license for Rotary Club Sioux Falls West, 4712 East Alpine Circle for a fundraiser on November 19, 2021.
Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening, Jamie Palmer with Licensing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on items fifteen through seventeen.
All right, thanks, Jamie. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to fifteen or sixteen or seventeen? All right, council, got any questions for Jamie here on these?
Actually-
Counselor Starr, go ahead.
Yeah, I do. For the applicant for item number fifteen, I guess I'm curious on how this would work, if it would be an additional open to the public, or if it's just for their club members, and how that would work.
See applicant here from Mini Haha Country Club, by chance? Looks like they're not here.
This particular license obviously would allow them to just sell off-sale liquor, wine, and beer to whomever is there and purchases it. But it does specifically allow it for off-sale, because they only currently have on-sale, which allows them to consume it on the premise. So that's what this license would allow.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Counselor Erickson.
Jamie, before you go too far, is this one of our new licenses that we just got with the census, the new off-sale one?
Yes, it is.
And how many off-sale did we get? Just one?
How many off-sale did we get?
For the new package liquor license, I know we got a handful of. I just was curious how many we had, if we'll see more of these coming through.
Yes, you will. Yeah, we've already had several, and more will be coming. I don't want to just shoot off the top of my head. It's a significant number.
Okay, perfect. Maybe if you could just send a quick email update about what we get for the new census, that'd be great. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions for Jamie? Hold on. All right, doesn't look like it.
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Erickson.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Erickson to approve these items. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. On to item eighteen, please.
Item eighteen is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located on East 21st Street between South 1st Avenue and South 7th Avenue from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban and RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional Districts to the RHP Single Family Residential Historic Preservation District, number 149592021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, multiple property owners.
Jason, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application and the owner is by various property owners along East 21st Street between 4th and 7th Avenue. It's about 4.53 acres of the total parcels. The purpose is they're looking at rezoning these parcels into a historical preservation single-family district. They're all part of the McKennan Park Historical District right now. This will give them some additional flexibility with some of these lots that are a little bit smaller for some construction and additions, but also gives them a little bit extra added requirements as part of the historical preservation statute. We did have a neighborhood meeting, our two neighborhood meetings. The second one, we had about 25 people. That was held at the end of September at the McKennan Park, Park Picnic Area. Most of those people are, all those people were supportive of this specific application.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on item eighteen? Council, you got any questions for Jason here?
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Item nineteen is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 4605 West 69th Street from the AG Agricultural District to the C3 Commercial Community District, number 149982021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicant, Sayre and Associates, Thad Roberts.
The applicant here is Sayre and Associates. The owner is Brentwood Plaza LLC. It's located south of 69th and east of South Tallgrass Avenue, just south of the Avera Heart Hospital. It's about .26 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is just to combine this parcel that was an old ag parcel into the existing C3 Commercial District that's surrounding it.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on item nineteen? Council, you got any questions on this one?
Move approval. Knightzert.
Second, Kylie.
Motion by Knightzert, seconded by Kylie to approve item nineteen. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Next item.
Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself.
You are recused. We'll read twenty into the record, please.
Item twenty is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 2010 and 2012 West 22nd Street from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District, number 150092021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, Erickson Properties LLC, Tony Erickson.
The applicant here is Erickson Properties LLC. It's located at 2010 and 2012 West 22nd Street. It's about .13 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is we're looking at matching the correct zoning with the current use of the property, which has been a duplex for some time.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public wish to speak on item twenty here? Council, any questions? Look for a motion, please.
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Brecky.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Counselor Brecky. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
That passes six to zero, and we will let Counselor Erickson take her seat again, and we will move on to item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 3301 East Rice Street from the I-1 Light Industrial District to the MH Manufactured Residential Housing District, number 150792021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicant is Painter Properties, Steve Painter.
The applicant and owner here is Steve Painter. It's located south of East Rice Street and east of North Bonson Avenue. It's about .59 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is this parcel's been used as part of the manufactured home for quite some time. They have recently purchased it, and so now they're just looking to rezone it to get it combined with the existing manufactured home park.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on item twenty-one? Council, you got any questions on this one?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie to approve twenty-one. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item.
Item twenty-two is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 4100 West 60th Street North from the C4 Commercial Regional and the I-1 Light Industrial Districts to the I-1 Light Industrial and I-2 Heavy Industrial Districts, number 150892021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, Enclave Companies, Carrie Franklin.
The applicant here is Carrie Franklin. The owner is Enclave Development. It's located at the northwest corner of I-29 and West 60th Street. It's 78.75 acres. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing a future retail light and heavy industrial development. This will give him a little more flexibility on the type of uses that can go there, so.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? All right, council, you got any questions for Jason?
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve twenty-two. Discussion on that, council. All right, hearing none, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right, that one passes seven to zero. Next item.
Item twenty-three is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located south of West 41st Street and west of South Ellis Road from the AG Agricultural District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District, RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban District, and RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density District, number 151012021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, Empire Homes, Brady Hyde.
The applicant, Brady Hyde, has requested this application, number twenty-three, be deferred to the November 9 meeting, and then we will see the preliminary plan come at item thirty, and that also will be requested by the applicant to be deferred to the November 9 meeting. We're continuing discussions with this applicant and the property owner to the west with some road access issues.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? Did you want to speak to this, ma'am? We are going to defer it, so, ma'am, did you, did you want to? Okay, I'm not getting any takers, so I just need a motion to defer this, then.
I will move to defer this until November 9.
Second, Kylie.
All right. Motion by Knightzert, seconded by Kylie to defer this item to November 9. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right, that one passes seven to zero. Next item.
Next item is twenty-four, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 725 East 28th Street from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District, number 151062021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, David Donahoe.
The applicant and owner here is David Donahoe. It's located at 725 East 28th Street. It's about .13 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant's house started on fire and has been demolished, and he's looking at constructing a new single-family home on this lot that's less than 50 feet wide.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on item twenty-four? Counselors, you have any questions for Jason here? All right, look for a motion to approve, please.
Move to approve, Brecky.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Brecky, seconded by Jensen to approve item twenty-four. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Next item.
Next item is twenty-five, is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 800 South Sycamore Avenue from the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density District to the RD2 Town Home Residential Traditional District, number 151072021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, AHS Incorporated, Brent Tucker.
The applicant and owner here is Affordable Housing Solutions. It's located south of East Arrowhead Parkway and east of South Sycamore Avenue, about .67 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at constructing Phase Two of the Field of Dreams project. In this phase, they're looking at doing townhomes that will be for sale.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on item twenty-five? Council, any questions here? All right, look for a motion, please.
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Kylie.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion there? Let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Next item is thirty-six, a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 530 North Cliff Avenue from the OO Office District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District, number 151152021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, Southeastern Development Foundation, Lynn Keller Forbes.
The applicant and owner here is Seacog. It's located at 530 North Cliff Avenue. It's about .12 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is that they're looking to match the current use of the property, which is a single-family house. They're looking to remodel the inside and then construct a future garage on the west side of the house.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on twenty-six? Council, any questions here?
Move approval.
Second, Brecky.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Brecky to approve item twenty-six. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Item twenty-seven.
Item twenty-seven is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 9009 East 57th Street from the AG Agricultural District to the RR Single Family Residential Rural District, number 151172021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicant is Todd Porter.
The applicant and owner here is Todd Porter. It's located south of East 57th Street and east of South Six Mile Road. It's about 15.23 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at subdividing this into two lots and then constructing a single-family home on each lot.
All right, thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on twenty-seven? Council, you got any questions for Jason here?
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve this item. Any discussion there? Let's vote on it, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Item twenty-eight.
Item twenty-eight is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 705 South Blauvelt Avenue from the I-1 Light Industrial, RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban, and RS Single Family Residential Suburban Districts to the CN Conservation District, number 151202021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, Iron Fox Farm, Daniel Voss.
The applicant and owner here is Daniel Voss. It's located at 705 South Blauvelt Avenue. It's .9 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning, as indicated at the first reading, these properties are difficult to develop, so the applicant is looking at constructing kind of a neighborhood garden on these properties.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening, committee. My name-
Good evening, committee. You can pull those up. You're a tall guy there. There you go.
Good evening, committee. My name is Cameron Rose. I'm a close residence of that property. I'm here tonight in support of the item. I have had the chance to speak to close dozen other residents of the area, nothing but support and no concerns. So I feel it brings or increases value and quality of the area. And with that, be all.
Okay. Thank you for being here. Anyone else here to speak on item twenty-eight here? All right, council, do you have any questions for Jason on this item? Counselor Erickson?
No questions. Just want to say thanks for coming and speaking in support of it. Sometimes we generally hear from people that are not happy with something, and so it's just nice to know that a project of this magnitude is supported, and so thanks for taking time out of your night to come and let us know how you make, how it makes you feel in the neighborhood and the asset that it will add. So, thank you. I have no questions. I'll move to approve.
Second, Kylie.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion on that motion, council? All right, hearing none, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to zero. Item twenty-nine.
Item twenty-nine is a second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 304 North Spring Avenue from the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District, number 151262021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, Discover Realty Group, Destiny Marshall.
The applicant and owner here is Destiny Marshall. It's located north of West 7th Street and west of North Minnesota Avenue. It's about .06 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant's looking at constructing a new single-family home on this lot of less than 5,000 square feet.
All right, thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on twenty-nine?
I'm the president of the Neighborhood Association of Pettigrew. This is in my, in my district here. I want to stress that we need to better communicate with the neighborhood associations when we have something like this. I'm not going to say if I approve or disapprove of this because we don't know. We need to, any kind of this stuff or redevelopment or anything, it's at 500 feet, to get ahold of the Neighborhood Association, because when we had that casino, we had more people reach out after that 500 feet here. So it's very, we need to be very transparent with the city or neighborhood associations to come together on this. I will be looking at the agendas every week. We need to know, did they have a meeting here with neighbors? What was their concerns? Is this house, is it going to be residential? If it's going to be a rental house, to that nature here. I'm going to stress again, 3,800 people I have a voice in the backbone for. This is why we have a neighborhood association, 852 properties. I, moving forward, I want the city to notify each neighborhood association when stuff like this or rezoning or casinos come up in the area to notify us, so we can get it out on our website, because 500 feet, to me, is not good enough. Okay? It affects It affects everybody else within that 500 feet. Um, it's just good transparency and good communication here to do this. Um, so I need to see, there's, there's questions that need to be answered here. Is this going to be, um, a residential property that somebody owns it? Is this going to be a, um, rental property here? And I need to see if Jacey could clarify, what issues did the neighbors have on that street? If there was any issues on that street? Again, we need to work on communication with neighborhood associations. A lot of people in South Dakota think neighborhood associations was, I'm telling you now, neighborhood associations is the backbone and the voice for the people, if y'all didn't realize that. Okay? I was voted in there to be a voice for the people, and that's how it runs in other cities and other states. So this stuff here needs to be notified through the neighborhood association, okay? So we need to work on that.
Anyone else here to speak on this topic tonight? All right, counsel, you got any questions for Jason on this?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Erickson.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Counselor Erickson to approve item 29. Any discussion on that motion? Let's vote on it, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero, next item, please.
Item 30 is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of 41 Ellis Edition, 148322021, sponsors the mayor.
Uh, just like I indicated in the previous rezoning request, the applicant is looking at deferring this for one week to the November 9th meeting.
All right. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 30? You can come speak on it, ma'am, come on up. Good evening.
Okay, Mayor Tannenhagen and members of the council, thank you for letting us speak tonight. My name is Cindy Klein Robinson, and I represent Klein Properties Limited. I live at 406808267th Street, Sioux Falls, South Dakota 57106. We own the 159 acres of property of the west-proposed 41 Ellis Edition. Although we are excited for the development, and it is, because it is proceeding west from the T Ellis Road towards our property, we do have concerns with the proposed preliminary plan of the 41 addition, addition, Ellis addition. The proposed plan that was presented and approved at Planning Commission showed the major collector road located on the half-mile line bending west from 41st Street onto our property. We take objection to this layout as the burden of the cost of the major collector would rest entirely on us. Major collectors are to be located on the half-mile line as well as on the adjoining property lines, so that adjoining property owners can share costs as well as access to the road. Today, a new plan is being presented to city council to be approved. Although we have had less than eight hours to review this plan, we now take objection to the layout as the major collector road is still not placed on the adjoining property line. By not having access to the major collector along the half-mile line, our development options are severely, and I mean severely limited, by the lack of access to the major collector. Also, the city of Sioux Falls Engineering Design Standards state that access points on major collectors are not allowed within 300 feet from the intersection of an arterial street. The new proposed plan of 41 Ellis fails to meet this engineering standard design, that standard design. The preliminary plan also fails to show water and sewer connections to our property from the 41 Ellis development at the half-mile connection to 41st Street. In closing, city of Sioux Falls Code of Ordinances clearly states that collectors shall be developed along or between property lines so that both landowners can share in the cost as well as having access to the collector. In the absence of a neighborhood meeting on this issue, we respectfully thank you for the motion to defer this item. This will allow us time to meet with city staff to resolve these issues. Thank you again for your time tonight.
All right.
Do you have any questions?
Uh, I don't think so.
Okay.
You can come back on the 9th, Linda.
Yes.
If, uh, we'll be deferring it and taking it up then, after you've had some time to review it, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Anyone else here to speak on this item then, tonight? All right, uh, then I'd ask for a motion to defer this item to Tuesday, uh, the 9th, please.
So move, Jensen.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Kylie to defer to November 9th. Any discussion there? All right, hearing none, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero, move to item 31.
Item 31 is a resolution authorizing the city of Sioux Falls to gift certain surplus equipment to the city of Hartford, South Dakota, sponsors the mayor.
Hello, good evening, Chief. I'm representing Sioux Falls Fire Rescue on item 31. It is a request that we surplus an air compressor from the city of Sioux Falls and then, um, allow it to be donated to the city of Hartford to be utilized by the Hartford Fire Department. They're a good mutual aid partner. Uh, the equipment has, uh, went through its service life with city of Sioux Falls. Uh, the Hartford Fire Department has volunteered to take that on, perform the maintenance and the repair to get it back in service, and it will be a valuable asset for them, so looking forward to your support. I'm willing to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you, sir. Any, uh, anyone from the public who should speak on this one? Counsel, you got any questions for Chief McRavie here?
Move to approve.
Second, Brecky.
Okay, motion by Kylie and seconded by Brecky to approve item 31. Any discussion on that motion, counsel? All right, hearing none, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yeah.
Knightsert.
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. We will move on to, uh, new business. We got a new business tonight, counsel. All right, not hearing any, we'll move on to general public input. Just a reminder, uh, this will be three minutes per person, and on items we didn't discuss earlier in the agenda, so if you're here for public input, come on up.
Hello, everybody.
Good evening.
Catherine Riffle here, um, advocate for the persons downtown, homeless, displaced, and veterans, et cetera, uh, and with the city here. We have some concerns that we have, uh, still bedbugs downtown in a couple organizations. We also have a huge concern about sex trafficking, and, um, I'm here now to ask you all to step up and help alleviate some of that down there. I know sex trafficking is a nationwide, uh, problem, and, um, we have people that go to our churches, that wear our badges, that are in medicals, et cetera, and they're part of the sex trafficking trading, so therefore, I'm going to ask Sioux Falls to step up and let's bring a bit of an end to it, at least around here. If you just want to say we got a good city and a good state representatives and all, then let's prove to the other states and our neighboring cities that, uh, we're serious about this. Sex trafficking is hurting a lot of people, we know that. We know that, uh, I hate to say it like this, but dirty badges come across drugs and then they take them out to the farmlands, et cetera, and, uh, induce these drugs into the persons so that they can have their way in whatever they want to do to an individual. So I'm calling for an end, or at least let's work on this. We have the winter months to work on it. Uh, I am not going to deny that I hold photos, et cetera, and, um, I intend to maybe meet with the chief of police if he still wants to meet with me, and the mayor as well, and I'm going to, uh, start showing the evidence that I personally have. I have nothing to fear myself. I do not fear these people. I've been around them for many years, but I'm sick and tired of what they're doing to the individuals downtown, and so therefore, that's what I'm going to work on. And, uh, I thank you for taking the time to listen to me, and I'll be back.
All right, Catherine.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input tonight, come on up.
Senior President of Sioux Falls. Another thing I'm going to address. When we have neighborhood meetings, to put in a, uh, coffee shop that's coming to y'all's area, 100 South Green Street, we had a meeting on that, it's a public meeting last week. And Jason Bieber needs to, because if I wasn't there, I'm another Teresa Staley, and Teresa Staley pushed this issue with council. As long as I'm in Pettigrew neighborhood, I'm going to shake the feathers. I want the city to come out and say when is the first reading and when is the second reading of city council. I don't want Jason Bieber to say in meetings only the second reading in front of city council when, when people come if they have an issue with development. I want the first and second reading, y'all can't say that online because it has happened. Teresa Staley has brought this behind closed doors. Mayor, you need to, you need to address this, this is not good transparency at all, and I will keep at this. I'm worse than Teresa Staley, and I'm going to tell you, people voting me in the neighborhood, this woman owns property that was on the agenda for today and wasn't notified. The city needs to make sure everybody's notified on that block when development is happening, when a house is being built there. She was not notified. This woman has put millions of dollars, this woman has police officers living on her properties, this woman has spent over $14 million on rental properties in the city. Again, they vote for me because I'm the voice in the backbone for the people. We're not going to get into dirty politics here. Again, when we have a neighborhood meeting, I want Jason Bieber, mayor, to say when is the first city council meeting and the second, and I just notify and want people to know about the second reading. If you look on my Neighborhood Association website, I had to put the first council meeting and what time and the second one. During the meeting of that, he says December blah 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 at this time, and I said, this that the first is, that's the second reading. When it gets to the second reading, people don't have time to come to city council members to address their concerns on properties. You don't encourage people to come on the second reading of the city council, the first reading and the second reading. I know y'all had issues about this, Teresa Staley had issues with it, behind closed doors. So when we have these neighborhood meetings, I want them to be straight-up forward when is the first reading and when is the second reading on, uh, rezoning stuff here. Not just the second reading, encourage people just to come to the second reading and leave out the first reading of city council meetings. I'm going to keep, uh, my eyes open on, um, these, um, these agenda items when they come up, but, uh, we got to be more transparent with zoning with Jason Bieber here, because it's, we, we can't keep hiding stuff here.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here for public input tonight?
Greetings, I'm David Zokitis, and tonight's topic is affordable housing. It's really quite a big issue if you're young and you want to buy a house, because a lot of people just can't afford it. Houses are expensive, and young people just don't make a whole lot of money. There's a number of economic contributors to this issue. Real wages, for example, have been flat for decades, while houses have gotten bigger, right in and of itself, that's going to make a problem. And then globalization is pushing a lot of well-paying jobs overseas. There are also tax issues that encourage a rise of unaffordable housing. If you're super rich, you can get a South Dakota trust and avoid income tax, and then you have more money to buy up investment houses, and that drives up the cost of housing in general. Zoning can contribute to unaffordable housing, because a lot of new developments are residential suburban, meaning big houses and big lots. We don't see a whole lot of new developments with small houses on small lots, residential traditional, which would be a whole lot cheaper. If you want to figure out what's going on with the problem, follow the money. If you have a house, if you have property, you benefit from unaffordable housing, because the prices are still very high for you, which is what you want. Government tends to subsidize suburban sprawl. We build a lot of big highways that cost a lot of money, and that encourages bigger houses, bigger lots, unaffordable housing. If we want to tackle unaffordable housing, the first thing to do is to determine if we really want to tackle it, because there's a lot, going to be a lot of pushback from people who benefit from unaffordable housing. But if the people have the will to tackle the problem, well then, what we need to do is reverse a lot of the things that we, that I just finished talking about a little while ago. In particular, we can change zoning to require a certain number of small houses and small lots. I'm thinking about changing the way zoning is done in general, and getting away from the monoculture and getting more towards scattered and diversity. I think it would allow for, uh, more flexible growth over the long term. And there are some ideas about how you might do mixed zoning. And of course, you know, you got to have something to smile about. Here's a sunset photograph I took right in my backyard. With that, have a good evening, everybody.
All right, thank you. Anyone else for general public input tonight? Good evening.
My name is Chad Bishop, I live at 7405 South Valencia Drive here in Sioux Falls. Please understand my intention here is to ask intelligent questions and not to question your intelligence. Any sense of frustration on my part is not directed at yourselves, but the situation we find ourselves in. There are a handful of policy recommendations below, including classifying all COVID-19 recovered city employees as being equivalent to or better than vaccinated, as well as reimbursing all city employees for SARS-CoV-2 antibody or adaptive T-cell response assays. You represent nearly 200,000 citizens, or roughly 23% of the citizens of South Dakota, what you do here matters. December 4th, 2020, President-elect Biden, when asked, "No, I don't think vaccines should be mandatory." I wouldn't demand it be mandatory. White House Press Secretary Jen Psaki on July 25th of this year, "That's not the role of the federal government when asked about vaccines." Speaker of the House Nancy Pelosi on April 29th, "So, here's the thing, we are, we cannot require someone to be vaccinated. That's just not what we do. It's a matter of privacy to know who is or who isn't." Now we have both public and private vaccination mandates. What do we call a form of government where you can't slip a cigarette paper between policy of the state and industry? Where the government holds the power of funding through Medicare and Medicaid reimbursements, regenerative authority through OSHA, contracts or research funding? I think I know what Mussolini would have called it. Three weeks ago Friday, Director of Medical Ethics at University of California, Irvine, Dr. Aaron Carriarty asked this question on Twitter. Someone fully vaccinated with J&amp;J vaccine is, per the data submitted to the FDA, 67%